Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I call to order the special meeting of the Menifee City Council for the purpose of a workshop presentation from the Sheriff's Department on contract services. Beyond, is, do we actually have an agenda for this beyond that?
It should be in front of you, sir.
No, I mean, beyond, I mean, okay.
No.
Is this a topic in general, or is this an educational seminar, or what?
It's just a workshop that the sheriff called for.
All right. Well, then, Mr. Johnson, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Captain Mike Judge, your Menifee Chief of Police will do introductions and start the workshop.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, honorable council members, staff, and citizens. On behalf of the Riverside Sheriff's Department, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come here and speak to you today. First, allow me to introduce Sheriff Stan Sniff, and he will continue with the introductions from here.
Good afternoon, Sheriff, how are you?
Good to see everybody. Mayor, council members, good to be before you. A little bit about what we're doing here today, and I'll kind of set the stage, and Will Taylor will go ahead and pass out the packets that you can walk away with today from this little informational brief on it. One of the issues that we've seen across the county, of course, contract policing is nothing new in Riverside County. There are a lot of communities, seventeen of the twenty-eight cities that make up Riverside County today, contract with the sheriff's office, roughly a million population, in addition to the one, three and a half million, or three and a half, three hundred fifty thousand, I'm sorry, a little bit late in the day, that we also in the unincorporated deal with, side by side with the California Highway Patrol. So all told, about 1.4 million end up being directly impacted by the Office of Sheriff here in Riverside County on the policing side. All 2.3 million folks that make up Riverside County are actually impacted by the sheriff's operations. Kind of where this came from is we've seen a lot of turnover in all our communities, not only in the electeds, but certainly at the city manager level, and that's nothing new, except it seems like it's accelerated the last few years here in Riverside County with some untimely deaths and some other issues. So many of the things that we're going to talk about today have actually been in place for a long time, but because of a lot of new folks on it, we thought it would be good to do a refresher. And we started this earlier in the year. It's certainly voluntary, and we appreciate the opportunity to be part of a study session. We've also done it as part of regular council meetings across Riverside County, and we're going to continue for as long as there's an interest. It will roughly take about an hour, but there's plenty of time for question and answers, but as I said, nothing is particularly new in this, other than, in many cases, people are understanding or come to grips with how we do contract city operations, probably for the first time, most of the time full-time staff. A little bit about that, the sheriff's office actually, for quite a number of years, even before I took office as sheriff some six years ago, we've always had meetings with all our contract city partners, and that's how we view you. And usually, they've been either twice a year, sometimes three times a year, sometimes four times a year, but the process on how the rate impacts every single community and where it comes from, and all the minutia that make up that rate, and how it changes each year, and why it changes each year, that information is constantly shared with all our partners. Now, over time, many of the city managers in the county that I grew up with, many of them had delegated out to other full-time staff, and we, of course, don't direct how each city ends up being represented at those quarterly meetings. But the give and take on that, and really lots of eyes on the target, so to speak, make for a great quality control mechanism, and many of the questions are answered there. So I hope this ends up clearing up a lot of the confusion. Part of the thing that we'll come back to before we end today is a little bit of discussion about JPAs, because the Joint Powers Authority, a group, that's quite literally what you're doing with the Sheriff's Department. And just to kind of underscore and set the framework for how the contract rates are derived in Riverside County, the mission of the Office of Sheriff has to deal with those 350,000 that I mentioned in the unincorporated. And my responsibility, the Office of Sheriff's responsibility in this county, like any of the other fifty-eight counties, is to respond to breaches of the peace. We don't do full-scale policing in the unincorporated area, and we never have. That's not our lawful authority. And why? Because a key component for every city under policing is to also respond to traffic accidents and to do traffic enforcement. And, of course, in the unincorporated area, that is the responsibility of the California Highway Patrol, and so we work side by side with that agency. But in a city, the policing responsibility is criminal investigation, typically at a much higher staffing level, because quite literally, a city can pay for any level of staffing that it wants. And no two of our seventeen cities do it exactly the same way. And they pick from a menu of options on that, they plus up, plus down, they have dedicated positions, and we'll get to some of those comments as far as what a dedicated position versus a supportive position is. And whether you get involved in the minutia or not is not really relevant, but understanding how it comes together is, I think, going to be good for each of you to have a grip on that, or a feeling or understanding of it. But the Office of Sheriff deals with response to the unincorporated area. Because of our sheer size and mass, and the Riverside County Sheriff's Department today is the second-largest of our fifty-eight sheriff's departments, substantially behind Los Angeles, but way bigger than many of the other county sheriff's departments. If you looked at all the police departments and sheriff's offices in California, talking about a sworn total of twenty-two-hundred, the Riverside County Sheriff's Office, depending on where we are in the hiring competition back and forth with some of the other counties and police departments, sits at fifth or sixth out of some four hundred agencies. So I say that not because it's a form of bragging, but the sheer size of our set of shoulders, so to speak, makes it very, very cost-effective. And Will Taylor, my Director of Administrative Services, will underscore, but you're really getting all government services from us at our government cost. There is no margin in it, there's no maneuverability on it. Our costs, and that's what's being passed on to you and every other community that contracts with us, are the direct and indirect costs that it costs us to do business. And, of course, you'll see on the charts, the lion's share of that ends up being personnel costs. The sheriff is also responsible, as you well know from all the debates going on right now, and our overcrowded jails, it doesn't make any difference whether we want it or not, we end up also operating a very large jail system that needs to get quite a bit bigger, especially after AB-109 took effect in October of 2011. We also end up securing some ninety courtrooms and do civil service, that's another division in the sheriff's office, and, of course, we share with about forty-seven of the other counties in California, I'm also the coroner, public administrator. So I've got lots of moving hats, very complex department that does more than simply patrol. But the one thing that we'll underscore to you is, when we talk about a wide set of shoulders, the issue with jails, courts, coroner's operation really has nothing to do with the contract rate, in fact, it doesn't even factor in. So there's some popular myth out there that sometimes the Sheriff's Department is looking for revenue streams to buff it up its buzz, far from it. In fact, there is really no impact on my budget that I deal with with the Board of Supervisors, whether I've got zero contract communities or a hundred contract communities, because they all break even on their own. Every dollar that comes in is expended in that community. So there is nothing that subsidizes. In fact, you'll see, and we'll underscore this near the end, my responsibility ethically is to make sure your community and every other community that contracts with us, and this is, there's a lot of pressure to do otherwise sometimes from the board, particularly when they've been in tough budget cycles, but this city, nor should any other city, subsidize the county operations, and vice versa, the county cannot subsidize the city operations. So it's a dollar-for-dollar swap on that. So when you hear me debating back and forth like a few years ago on the budget issues, truly, much of that has to do with some of the unincorporated area, which the Board can set by budget policy, but also jails and courts and coroner operations, which are not in any way, shape, or form included in how we end up contracting, or figuring out a contract rate for each of our communities. The sheriff's office also, and I think this is not lost on you, certainly lawsuits that appear in the paper that become public information, you know full well, law enforcement, just like everything else in public safety, we live in a litigious society, and it's extremely liability-prone. So it's not a week that doesn't go by and the sheriff's office is being sued, just like any other agency is being sued. And it should not be lost on any of you, and I know many of you on this council for a number of years, the sheriff's office absorbs all the liability for our actions of our officers. And so, for many communities, big and small, that is a horrendous scare that most of them end up having to face due to perfectly legitimate police actions, but in the course and scope of their duties, they end up being sued, just like you end up being sued for certain things that the community ends up doing in its government directions on that. So that is a big issue on it for many communities as well, in addition to being our direct and indirect costs on it. The other issue is, and it's, we've got some issues going on right now in Riverside County with some of our allied agencies, and we work very closely with them, but personnel issues, recruiting, hiring, training, all those issues end up being essentially my headache, and that's usually what most city managers echo, and it's, the contract for law enforcement services really is very pure form of outsourcing, so to speak, which is a very popular term these days, but it really makes it quite turnkey for city government to end up doing it. All the headaches, essentially, as far as promotion, arbitrations, all the labor issues, even as far as the flexibility of signing a commander that ends up serving as your police chief, all those issues, many communities will talk about having local control, and as I move across the county pretty much nonstop, because I spend almost all my time out with groups talking, big and small, is that's really a pro word oftentimes, particularly for smaller agencies, for an incipient form of corruption. The reality is, you don't want to have local control, what you want is local responsiveness. And certainly, our commanders can do that, and all of them have direction, and for the most part, they can react to threats and opportunities in the local community without having me make the micro decisions or anybody else downtown in Riverside. There are certain policy issues, of course, because of those liability issues that we have to be involved in, but as far as reacting to threats and opportunities in every community and redeploying resources to deal with those things, we encourage, and I personally encourage, all the commanders to be very, very proactive and utilize a lot of initiative. And frankly, I get nothing but kudos from one end of the county or another as far as how responsive we are. But, you know, going back to that issue of local control, that typically is, and we're seeing that in other parts of the county right now, where communities are trying to come to grips with folks on the council or in city government trying to micromanage certain things that really should not. The job and duty of law enforcement is to enforce laws equally, and I've had discussions with some cities, one of which, unnamed, wanted to be a sanctuary city, and I appreciate that, but we don't bend the vehicle code, just like the LA Police Chief found out the hard way, there's only one state vehicle code, and it's our job in law enforcement, inside and outside that community, to enforce the law equally, and that's exactly what we end up doing, even though there's a gravitational pull sometimes to bend and tweak the law or to use law enforcement as its own private army in some communities. Hopefully, we'll never see that in Riverside County. The JPA issue that comes up from time to time, and I'd ask you, like I said earlier, to kind of think what Will walks through in these slides, is really a form of a JPA. You're really talking about seventeen cities, that unincorporated area that I mentioned was about 350,000, about 1.3, 1.4 million all told out of it, and that's really what you're talking about on getting a cost-effective model on police services. What I'm going to do now is pause, and I'm going to let, introduce Will Taylor, and let Will, Will is my Director of Administrative Services, so my overall budget in Riverside County Sheriff's Department for all those moving parts I talked about, this year will be a little over $600 million, so it's no small task for him to end up dealing with that, and he works side by side with me as far as dealing with the Board of Supervisors on our budget issues. So with that...
Before you come to the mic, I have a public speaker, and I need to take that public speaker at this time before you do your slides. Mr., call the public speaker.
Chuck Ruder.
Mayor, man, city council, good to be back, city staff. I came today because I went to a meeting this past Saturday to listen to Chief Judge speak, and I came away from that meeting very comfortable with what I heard. Do you understand what I said? I know I have a speech impediment, you don't know what I'm saying, huh? Am I talking too low?
No, you're coming through loud and clear, we just don't understand the context.
Oh, in other words, I felt very comfortable with having Chief Judge be our chief.
So are we.
Just like, just like the other two that were before him, McAvain and Hill. I think he's going to turn out pretty good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ruder. Madam Clerk, do we have any more speakers?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Please proceed, sir, if you would, with your presentation. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ruder.
Good afternoon. Will Taylor, Director of Administration for the Sheriff's Department. I will echo your sentiment about Mr. Captain Judge, he's a really good guy, and I enjoy working with him. You can pay me later. I wanted to go over a high level of the contract rate with you. Again, thanks for having us here. Terry has seen this slide before, your fiscal staff really participates all the time at our contract meetings, and they're very involved, and they keep me on my toes and ask me some very good questions, so I really appreciate that. So, let's go ahead and get into our contract briefing. Our contract model is governed by the California Government Code 51350, which basically says the service that we are providing must be one that's only provided to the contract city or cities, and not to the non-contract agencies or unincorporated area. The cost charge must be one that the county incurs only because of its contract with the cities. So when we staff the Menifee PD, we bring those bodies on just for your city, and they work in your city, for your city. Also, our board policy states that there must be full cost recovery, and rates for contract services to cities shall be reviewed annually by the County Auditor Controller's Office. So in addition to all the documentation that goes into calculating the rate, that's reviewed by the Auditor Controller's Office. Also, we give a copy of our rate packet to our contract partners, and they get an opportunity to comb through it as well and ask any questions that they may have. It works out really well, it's a very transparent process. If you have any questions while I'm going through, please feel free to stop me. Let's talk a little bit about our model. Our model is based on patrol service hours. We equate the hours that you're buying to full-time equivalent positions, but when we're talking about your service level, we talk about hours. So with that, there's no general overhead cost included in our contract rate, the sheriff is not in the rate, our other executive team members are not in the rate. The rate is based on patrol station operations. It includes classified and sworn support personnel. The real key thing to hopefully that you come away with and remember today is that there's two major components to our rate. There's our labor costs, which are our salaries and benefits, and then we have the services and supplies costs, which are the equipment that the deputies use to do their job. The labor costs are always calculated in the current fiscal year. We freeze our department at a particular point in time, we look at the patrol operation, we freeze that at a particular point in time, and we calculate the salaries and benefits that go into the rate. Now, our services and supplies costs are calculated from the prior fiscal year, and the reason why we do that is we want to provide you with audited financial statements, and so that there are no material adjustments. Once the county closes the books, the auditor controller signs off on the financial statements, we take that data and we use that to calculate the rate. The other thing to remember is that the Board of Supervisors, and we're getting into the cost here, the Board of Supervisors, not the sheriff, is the one that negotiates with the county unions. We are not at the table, they have an HR team that negotiates with the various sheriff's unions, and then they come to an agreement, they tell us what the outcome is, and it not only impacts the contract rate when costs go up, but it also impacts our overall budget, which is $600 million. So it impacts the areas of our Corrections Division, our Court Services Division, our Coroner's Operation, so it's felt all the way throughout. Contract cities are separate from our net county costs. It's dollar-for-dollar for the contracts, you get what you pay for. The unincorporated area is handled by the county, they're responsible for funding that area of our budget.
Okay, let's pause there. And this has been a bugaboo, and I started out on a small police department and transferred and started over again on the Sheriff's Department in 1979, and because of my city experience, I was constantly used in our contract city policing operations, grew up through the chain of command. Now, no questions have come up yet, but for most of you, you're wondering, and this is even if you didn't listen closely to what he just said, he touched upon a key issue that's been a bugaboo for communities for thirty-some-odd years as this model has been refined, and that is, Stan, why can you not tell us what the rate's going to be before the start of the fiscal year? And because everybody's planning their budgets based on what their costs are going to be, and we're outsourced to the sheriff's department, tell us ahead of time before the fiscal year starts what the rate's going to be. And he touched upon it, because I have to capture real costs. If you look at my engine, just in the patrol arena that we talked about, not all the other arenas I mentioned that go beyond that, those are constantly moving targets, step increases, new people being hired, new positions being filled, sometimes contracting, but mostly extending to a JPA model. So it's quite literally...
Sorry, I'm...
Quite literally...
Hello?
Quite literally a moving target on that. However, if you stop and think about it, if the sheriff's department were to give you a swag, and those are big numbers, you'll see in the pie charts, that's the lion's share personnel costs over and above the Class II or supply costs, but if I were to give a swag, if the department were to give a city a swag, and it was either too rich or too lean, one on the other side, whether it's the county or the city even, could end up getting stiffed for paying more money than it actually costs. Remember, the model is driven by what real costs are. My costs are constantly, end up flexing as this model I indicated, I'm adding more positions, people are getting step increases, thousands of people in the mix on that, I have to take a snapshot to give you a cost. So it's a vertical snapshot done at a time, typically in January or February. But here's the kicker that I alluded to, when we end up having that rate, the rate change or delta from what the rate was the previous year that you entered the fiscal year with, that is going retroactive all the way back to July 1. And that's always been a question with every city, is just tell us at the start of the fiscal year what the rate's going to be. And the problem is, it's so imprecise, it harms one of us on either side of it. If it's too rich or too lean, somebody ends up being stiffed. So we capture real costs mid-year, retroactive back to the fiscal year start. What we do do is a courtesy for every community, because everybody for planning figures for their budget that starts one July has to have some type of a target. And so typically, and historically, our department has always ended up indicating, now you're going to see the numbers are different in real life, but we've always projected 5 percent, and typically, it's come in far less than 5 percent. In some years, prior to the chart you'll see in a few minutes, it actually came out to a negative number, it actually went down, because it's, again, based on real costs. But 5 percent, and what typically, city managers across, in my experience in doing this for many years, have done, was sometimes they'll take our suggestion, sometimes they'll pee it back, depending on where their budget issues are, or strategically, where they want to end up having accounts where they want to park money for the city. But one way or another, it works to their advantage. To us, it's a courtesy to you for us to be conservative and give the 5 percent, even if that's a higher number than we think it's actually going to come in. You end up reaping the benefit of having some money left over in that, but we have to pass on our real costs. The Class II, as he indicated, the supply cost, that's always the previous year. So the two of those are very different. Labor costs are captured as real time as we can, typically in January and February. Okay? We'll come back to that, because that comes up a couple times.
I'm one of those new guys you were talking about, and I, you said step change, I don't see what, and I'm sure everybody else understands, but what changes?
Well, there's a whole, when you see the negotiated benefits with an MOU, post certificates are one, sometimes there's other specialty pay that people apply for and get bilingual pay, all those are negotiated benefits as part of the MOU with the labor unions. And remember, there's four different labor unions, and he'll tick through some of those in a few minutes on the slide. There's not only the deputy union that basically has deputies and corporals and detectives, but there's also a management, law enforcement management unit that has the sergeants and lieutenants and captains in it, it's all civil service protected, and then two civilian ones, SEIU and LIUNA.
How much off can it be? Because you said it always really works out, you said it pretty much, you know, it's plus and minus a little bit for you, sometimes we win, sometimes you win, sometimes...
No, I didn't say that. I said to prevent sometimes me winning or you winning, we end up getting real costs. We avoid that by taking swags, or just a guesstimate on what the rate's going to be at the start of the year.
Right.
So our real costs are actually captured when we do the rate analysis, and he'll talk to that.
But at the end of the year, is it, can you roughly estimate how many thousands of dollars you're talking about in that window of, you know?
Well, we're talking in terms of millions of dollars.
Millions, okay.
Yes. So that's the issue. You're getting my economy scaled, because you're buying a piece of our operation on a very wide set of shoulders, so it's an enormous amount of money. And as I said, as best we can down to the penny and dollar, let alone thousands of dollars or millions of dollars, I have to recoup my real costs expended doing your police work in the city. And you cannot be caught in any way subsidizing the county operations. So we have to have as precise a cut on what those real costs are, not a swag, not a guesstimate, and this is a pretty precise, I mean, nothing's perfect, but this is pretty darn precise as far as how we've done this, and it's matured over probably now three decades on that, with a lot of legal beagles, including from communities, keeping an eye on it. So we do the best we can to give you the real costs, because that's what you incur.
And cities give you a hard time with that, because they like to be precise when they present the budgets and things like that?
No, I think every community, including my own, wants to have a legitimate target before we start the fiscal year, and so we all get that. It's just that it's, it makes it very awkward when I'm not, there is no margin, as I indicated at the beginning, so there's no fudge factor. So that rate is exactly kind of a tipping point or break-even point on what our costs are. There's no margin for me to end up absorbing a hit or for you to absorb a hit, and to do that, you have to do it partway into the fiscal year, usually about halfway. Sometimes it will go from year to year a little bit longer than that, like into March, April, and that's because there may be an active negotiation with one of the labor unions. In this case, for a couple of years now, they've done them all across the board, a couple of years back, for three- and four-year contracts. But back in the day, we would have contracts change every year, and that became very problematical on that. And so we would have to wait to see what the negotiated benefits were going to be, including in that current fiscal year from the board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good questions. Where I left off was, contract cities are separate from NCC. NC stands for net county cost. That is the portion that the county of Riverside is responsible for, which is the unincorporated area, the county jail system, our civil processes, our coroner's bureau, public administrator. Again, cities, it's a dollar-for-dollar revenue in, expense out. They're separated from our net county cost discussion. So when we're having our budget hearings, we're talking about our net county cost of what the county is responsible for. Looking at our contract city rate, here is a high, very high-level breakdown. Ninety percent of our contract rate has to do with salaries and benefits. 10 percent has to do with the service and supplies, and of course, the training costs. So the real-time cost of capturing salary and benefits in the current fiscal year is critical, because it's the majority of our rate. The services and supplies costs, the 10 percent part, it has an impact, but not as much as salaries and benefits. Salaries and benefits drive our contract rate more than anything else. As the sheriff mentioned, there are four unions that are represented in our contract rate. One is the Riverside Sheriff's Association, which is the RSA, or the Deputies Union. That makes up about 65 percent of the contract rate. They're the largest driver of the rate, more than any other unions. And then there's our Law Enforcement Management Unit, which is also known as LIMU. They're about another 23 percent of the rate. And then we have SEIU and LIUNA, which are our classified employees that make up the remainder of the contract rate. But as a guide, if you're reading in the papers and you kind of see what the RSA union is kind of negotiating, and percent increases that they receive as far as wage increases, that will kind of give you an idea of where the contract rate is heading, so. Now, let's get into the actual contract rate. What you have, council members and clerk, city clerk, you have this in your packet. This is our actual contract rate broken up into segments, and we do it this way to illustrate the various pieces of the contract rate. And one of the myths I would like to discuss today is that we do not pay our deputies $132.69 and a half. If we did, we wouldn't really have a recruiting issue right now, because they'd be knocking down our door to come and work for us. But the deputy part of the contract rate, and again, this is the whole system of what you're paying for. The deputy portion, which includes the salaries and benefits and all of their necessary equipment, is $72.18, that's that big red part for the patrol officer. Then we have... Then we have the sworn support. We have our detectives and our sergeants. These are the, kind of the supervision, the support for the deputies with what we call the boots on the ground. That's the other major part of the contract rate, which is $33.56.
Mr. Denver?
Did I hear you say that you're paying your patrol officers on average $72 an hour?
No, that is the rate of all of, that's their salaries and their benefits, plus all of the equipment and services and supplies that goes into contracting.
Thank you.
So the next largest part is our central dispatch unit. That's that purple part, slice up there, $10.30 an hour. That's for our dispatch unit, pretty straightforward. Then we have our classified support personnel, which is $8.50. That's our CSOs, our SSOs, our office assistants. All the classified positions that go into supporting the deputies and the sergeants and the like to help them, you know, run the operation. And then we get into the other part, and we like to break this out so that it's very transparent and you know every little piece of the contract rate. We have our CAL CAP, which is a dollar and 62 cents. That CAL CAP, I get that question a lot, stands for Countywide Cost Allocation Plan. It's a cost that's passed on through to our department from the county. And it pays for, covers departments such as county council, auditor controller's office, human resources. And so that is an overhead charge that we have to include in our rate. It's a dollar 62 of the $132.69. Other components are, you know, field training, our information services, our records bureau, our administration, which covers our public information officers. We have our technical services or our IT department. There's personnel, recruiting, accounting and finance, our training center, and our contracts and grants unit. So all those various pieces total up to the $132.69. And that's just a brief overview of the contract rate.
Okay, let's pause on that one for a second too, because he touched upon some things that are really critical for you to garner out of this. And that's, again, to go back to my original comments at the start, it's almost a holistic approach or systematic cost. You're paying for service hours. And think about this in terms of your own staff employees that are 28, 20, 80 employees, and you absorb them when they're gone on vacation or they're sick or broken, you just operate without. You're buying service hours. When a deputy is broken or off on admin leave or off on vacation, I have to fill those service hours with another person. The detectives that follow up those investigators, that is included in the rate. So the more width on that pyramid, so to speak, at the base, more service hours, it drives in the rest of the infrastructure. The detectives that support you, the sergeants that oversee for command and control, the lieutenants that manage, the dispatchers, the recruiters, the, all the rest of the mechanisms, just as it would be for any subset for a separate police department. So you're buying systemic costs. But the footprint on service hours is, includes all that totality. And you can plus this up, you can add to this, and that's what I mentioned at the outset, that every city does it a little bit differently. This will drive a certain number of sergeants, investigators, lieutenants by our normal staff ratios, because again, you're buying a piece of our larger operation with our existing staff ratios and how we do business. And then every city has the option, and most cities do that, they want extra sergeants to do this or that. They want extra lieutenants to do this or that, over and above that model. And he'll touch upon that in a few minutes. This is the supported, the base model. And then to that, we have dedicated positions. Those dedicated positions that he'll touch upon are 20, 80 positions, just like your existing city staff. In other words, when they're on vacation, they're not there. I'm not backfilling them. And that's why the rate is much cheaper on those folks, on those costs. Every city ends up usually plusing up with additional, sometimes deputies, school resource officers. Typically, it ends up being sergeants and lieutenants. They want over and above what is driven out of this model.
Excuse me, sure. You speak of full cost recovery. I was just curious, incorporated in this, do you consider future unfunded liabilities that accrue to, in a general sense, officers in the field?
As far as the liability actions I was talking about, those come back into this typically through, in the CAL CAP portion or the admin portion. But here's, that question comes up every once in a while because you'll see, well, the other day I got sued for 15 million for one officer involved shooting. It's probably not going to have any merit, but the reality is, they have the opportunity to go through that process. But think in terms of how many years that'll be before that comes to fruition, one way or another, a long way off. So we only have the opportunity, and so far, that's what county government has adhered to on charging what we know. And so it's kind of oriented toward the past, and clearly, when there are liability issues, those get woven into it. But they take a long time before they actually reenter the atmosphere and come into fruition on that. Good question though, and that is an issue that someday the county will have to wrestle with, if it ever does. But from our standpoint, I would have those liability things anyway without a particular city, because I still have a large patrol area that I have to deal with. I have other areas where we utilize deadly force and end up dealing with constitutional rights. So that never goes away. But as I said, the county also has an exceptionally wide set of shoulders too, typically much bigger than even the second largest or first largest city in this, in this county, in the county seat Riverside.
And you, and you can pencil out precisely your future costs, for example, on pension and health benefits after retirement?
Yeah, and that's already figured in. But the bigger issue is, and touching upon your point, just to drive this point home, because I always get questions, well Stan, why can't we just modify what you want to do on detectives and sergeants? I cannot do that because it's my liability on the operations. You're not absorbing any of that. So the command and control issues liability wise and training issues, how we document cases, how we do investigations, all those things, I have to protect the government on doing that. And so when somebody says, well Stan, you can make the rate cheaper by having fewer sergeants in it, you know, just rational, that is exactly the wrong thing to do in law enforcement. In fact, that's what led to the Taisha Miller decision in Riverside, if you remember, inadequate supervision. And I get pushed every once in a while from even the board of supervisors and the rest of it, you know, they're always looking for additional revenue. Can't we charge the cities for this? And I have to defend all of you on baseline services like helicopters and bomb teams and so on. Because by, by law, anything that I have any way, I can't turn around and charge communities. But of course, all of you in government, all of us in government right now are looking for every nickel that we can to have a direct offset and make sure we're not subsidizing anything. So that ethical battle as far as you not subsidizing our operations and us not subsidizing your operations, the sheriff has to walk that, not only with every community, but also with the board of supervisors as well. And those issues as far as, well Stan, if you have less sergeants, and a few years ago, I had a bitter debate with a county executive officer, because in his mindset, he thought captains, and bless the captains and lieutenants because they are critical. But the most critical job in law enforcement is the frontline supervisor, the sergeant that oversees and grows mentors, but also holds and control our 24/7 operations. And I had to do an educational thing was that I would absorb hits on the captain level, but I could not back off on our staffing ratios of one to seven, which is kind of our industry standard on supervisors. So thanks for asking those questions.
Chief, one question out of the, out of the big pie here. Where do, where does the helicopter come in and the bomb squads?
He's going to get to that. So if you hold that for a second.
Good question. You're ahead of the game. Any other questions on our pie chart here? Okay, let's talk about the history of the contract city rate. As we discussed earlier, we normally tell our contract partners to plan for about a 5% increase for the fiscal year when they're preparing their budgets. Here is a chart that kind of lays out the contract rate and the percent increase since 99, 2000. If you focus on the second column to the far right, fiscal year 06, 07, all the way down to 12, 13, you will see, even though we have projected a 5% increase, for the most part, it's been less than 5%. 5% is just a good benchmark for cities to use. And if you focus on fiscal year 11, 12, fiscal year 10, 11, and 11, 12, those years, the rates didn't go up as much because the unions were imposed upon. In fiscal year 11, 12, especially the RSA union, which is the largest part of our contract, they were imposed upon and they were renegotiating their contract. A lot of their steps were frozen, they had some give backs that they had to do. And so it did, the rate didn't go up as much. It only went up 1.1% at that particular time. But then, for 12, 13, they renegotiated their contract and they received, you know, they had to pay into their pension, but also they got some raises. So that's the part that drove up the contract rate. But again, for 13, 14, when Terry asks me or any other fiscal manager asks me, what's the rate going to be, I'm going to say 5%. It's standard. If you see me in the grocery store, if you see me at the movies, I'll say 5%. Benefits of contract law enforcement. As far as the budget goes, that we touched upon, contract cities are separate again from our net county cost. The sheriff is not in negotiations, that's the job of the board of supervisors and the unions. You get a great deal of economy of scale with contracting with us. You get a set of wide shoulders. And we touched on also, we brought up the issue of baseline services. And I have, the next slide, we'll, we'll get into that a little bit. Leadership. Our sheriff's captain serves as your police chief. You get a great deal of experience in the criminal justice system. There's a great deal of communication with, we have quarterly meetings, and there's a transparent rate review with our stakeholders. Baseline services. These are specialized bureaus within our department that are not included in the contract rate. We are not billing you for these services. Professional standards bureau or our internal affairs, our SWAT unit, which also is known as Special Enforcement Bureau, SIB, Special Investigations Bureau, the helicopter, which is our aviation unit, our hazardous device team, forensic services, and academy training. All of these resources at your disposal are not in our contract rate.
Excuse me, I have a question. So these baseline services, when they occur in our city?
Yes.
Whether it's SWAT or detective homicide or coroner, whatever, forensic services, you don't subsequently bill us later for those? Or is it then, moving forward into the following fiscal year, you capture the actual costs and then estimate it forward for what our contract rate may be for the following year?
No, we do not capture the baseline.
So the county completely eats these costs of these services in our city?
Yes, unless there's an extenuating circumstances where there's, overtime would have to be billed, but that's a decision that administration would make. But as far as the contract rate goes, no, we don't capture any of these costs at any time.
Anything, and again, it goes back to the model, whether I have zero contract partners or 100 contract partners, there's no impact. Those things that I would have to have irrespective of having any contract partner, I cannot bill for. And that's that battle I mentioned that I constantly have. Do I have every once in a while, the supervisor saying that we want to charge for forensic services or we want to charge for the bomb team, the hazardous device team or aviation? I get it every couple of years. Every time they're twisting in the wind on more money, that question will be raised and we indicate, no, we can't do that by law. County council ends up reminding them they can't do that, even though there's that gravitational pull to try to find some offset. The other question that comes up with that is, under the mutual aid system where we all share resources in, within California, particularly within Riverside County, in other words, when we have help that we need here in the city of Menifee or out in the unincorporated area, other agencies, whether it's a mayday distress call, a plane crash or some other disaster, big fight that gets out of hand, the mayday call will draw all law enforcement in for the, for the time of the emergency, and then actually after that, they end up departing and going back. And then we reciprocate, whether it's Menifee Police Department or the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, all of us reciprocate. We don't strip out all the resources, but when somebody has a mayday call, we all go for the emergency because we all reciprocate when we have our own emergency and have that cavalry come to our rescue on that. So I get questions all the time from other communities. The most recent one was out of the city of Corona, basically saying, well Stan, you'd make that helicopter available to our folks over in Corona Police Department? Well, absolutely, if it's a priority call like life threatening. But if you stop and think about how the food chain operates, those helicopters were the use of the sheriff. So my needs come first. If it's the same type of life threatening call, they're going to go to my needs before they go to a separate jurisdiction like that. And that, my needs include all our contract partners on that. So will we end up helping Corona? Absolutely, unless I got something more critical going on in my area. And the helicopter goes based on what the priorities, same with the bomb teams. We'll eventually get to everybody, but the priority for those specialized baseline units is for my business. And if it's a higher priority in another community, absolutely. If it's life threatening and less life threatening in one of my areas on that, we all get that. Those resources go on where the highest priority calls are. But they're prioritized on my needs over and above others.
Well, I could see where the county board of supervisors would want to recover those costs in these austere fiscal environments, just like every other governmental agency across the country, whether it's state, municipal, school district, what have you. When you talk about full cost recovery, it seems to me like we're applying the government code 51350 from full cost recovery not evenly across the board. Full cost recovery means full cost recovery. So that's why I kind of asked the question from the standpoint of, you know, I do a little bit of public finance from time to time. I know enough to be dangerous.
Uh-oh.
And so, so when you talk about applying direct and indirect costs to what you charge us, those are built into your hourly rate?
Correct, but only for that piece of the patrol operation.
But only for what you deliver us.
Not jails, not coroner, not courts. And that's important because my budget is big because it has all those moving parts. That is irrespective of any modeling that we do, you're taking a subset of my patrol operations and the entire system that supports that patrol operations. And then the helicopter thing, just to drive home a point on that, and why the sheriff would have a helicopter in the first place, even if I had no contract city partners whatsoever, is because I'm responsible by law for searches and rescues within the county and primarily those in the unincorporated area. And different areas of the county don't probably understand the sheer magnitude of that, but this sheriff's department responds to 150 lost hiker calls alone. That's one every two days. And so I have a choice, cost effectiveness of putting human beings at great risk, and we have a lot of volunteers and a lot of full-time staff that have to deal with those. But those are all emergencies, and that helicopter is, becomes extremely cost effective to end up getting in and out and not putting human beings, my human beings, at direct risk, looking over Mount San Jacinto or out in the boondocks of the desert. And so I would have a need for a helicopter to do that, even if I didn't have one single contract partner. And that's the difficulty on the county trying to charge back for those type of services because they'd have to have a helicopter anyway. And I cannot charge for things that I have to have anyway.
That's an interesting concept there. You would, okay. Please proceed.
Okay. When we talk about contract cost, we're referring to the contract rate, mileage cost, is that, sorry, facility cost, booking fees and CAL ID, and our records management system. And on the next slide, I have the Menifee history. And it kind of lays out in detail your personnel and training cost, your contract cost, mileage cost, facility cost, booking fees, CAL ID, RMS, and your total. Last fiscal year, you're looking at about $8.8 million for your entire contract cost.
Now, that's, that's what we build you. Each city, and your city is no different, you also have, that the city manager controls with the council, a amount of money that you allocate for storefronts, other specialized things, over and above that. That's just what we build and got, got funds from you for. But every community also has another separate, and so your, your budget line item may show for the entire police department a larger amount because you spend money inside, just like every other community. Many of them support storefronts, as I said, citizens patrol things that are under the police budget and other, you know, speed sensing devices, wherever you park under the police budget, over and above what we end up handling it out of the office of sheriff. So your budget sometimes will vary on that, and every community seems to end up doing that.
So I have a question for staff, Mr. Johnson or Terry. If you look at then, the difference between fiscal year 11 and 12 and 12, 13, 8.8 million versus 7.9 million, that's an 11.39% increase year over year in just contract costs. But yet, the hourly rate from the previous slides for, at 132 and some change versus 120. But yet, the hourly rate from the previous slides for at one thirty-two and some change versus one twenty-six and some change is only a four point seven percent increase year over year for the contract city rate per hour. So I'm having a hard time understanding how we get from a four point seven percent increase in the hourly rate to an eleven point three nine percent increase for total contract costs year over year. And there may not be an answer today, but these are the things that, I mean, we look at variances in public finance, right? And so there's got to be a reason why that anomaly exists and I don't know if we understand what that anomaly is. And maybe it's something simple, but all I, you know, I look at that eleven point three nine percent increase year over year in the contract costs. But yet, we have, what do we got? Point four deputies per one thousand residents? Is that what our current ratio is? And so I know that the council over the last five years has had to make some choices that are reflected here on this, this graph. And so those are the things, those are the types of things that concern me when we talk about contract service delivery and what we're actually paying for what we're getting and how many boots on the ground we actually have in Menifee per shift. That's, I know it's kind of a philosophical question, but those are the things that keep me up at night sometimes.
Excuse me, does the spreadsheet also include overtime, green sheet time?
Overtime, yes.
Overtime's included in this right here, this eight point eight million?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Was a big jump there on the, I don't, the seven point, and the contract rate is in that first column there, the seven point nine versus seven point oh.
And you divide it by.
One went down in mileage costs, facility costs went up, booking fee was zero. I don't, why was the booking fee in eleven, twelve, zero?
They didn't hit their average.
Oh, okay, because it's startup city.
Okay. So that came, and then the CAL ID went up a little bit and RMS. But I don't, I don't know what the accounting, other than perhaps overtime being buried into it. We can certainly look into that and get back to you.
Well, and I, and I, and I appreciate, I don't want to, the, I don't want to, I don't want us to get in the minutia. That's for everybody else too. But when, when you look at this historic contract city rate, that chart, back to the, back to five slides. That one.
This one.
Yeah. When you show a twelve thirteen, I'm assuming that that four point six nine percent is a year over year change from the previous fiscal year?
Yes.
But yet, okay, and I, and I, I get that. But why then, when I calculate the percent of change from eight point eight million versus seven point nine million, which is total contract, actual costs, I'm assuming.
Yes.
It's eleven point three nine percent.
Yes.
Yeah. If you go back and also look mayor at oh nine, ten, you'll see that there was staff added to that. The following year, it actually was eight point eight. You added more staff and then, then you ended up dropping two. So you've added and subtracted. But if, I think it's a less of a shock when you look at fiscal year ten, eleven to the clear right for the total and compare that with fiscal year twelve thirteen.
Yeah, that's a good point. That's a good point. But, but I just want to share with staff and those in the public safety committee that are going to be analyzing this in the future for trying to increase our service delivery and, and how, whether we can afford it or not.
Yes.
My, my concern philosophically is that we appear to be on the aggregate over the five fiscal years that we've been in city. We had a seventeen point five percent increase, but yet our property tax revenue, our sales tax revenue aren't keeping pace. And then the governor takes away our motor vehicle licensing fee and that helps, and that makes trouble for staff to have to balance the budget. So, you know, I just want to speak directly and share my concerns as all. This is a workshop.
Yes, very valid concerns.
Thanks. Thanks for listening.
Oh, and that's why I've been engaged with all four of your cities on that VLF takeaway too. Because it's, and it hurt all of you and a couple of the cities, it's hurt so badly, they were so badly crippled on their law enforcement that it, I mean, a couple of them are looking at disincorporation at this point. And that's a sad thing. That is really a sad thing.
We, we certainly appreciate your support and your lobbying, lobbying effort on SB fifty-six.
Well, and just in fairness, because it puts my people at direct risk in every one of these communities. In fact, in one of the unnamed cities nearby, but it wouldn't be hard for you to guess, we've had to reduce down at night, down to one person and move a county person close by just to protect the officer. And that was my message to the governor directly, and that's been my message to the legislature over the last couple of years on this, is I have a personal interest in it because it puts my folks at direct risk, even though they're serving in your communities. And you have no, you don't really have a choice as far as having reduced because you're trying to live within a very constrained budget. And then having that money taken away has really hurt you as new cities. But, but the reality is it has a direct impact on the safety of our employees and the safety of our communities.
Thank you.
Here's what we have for the city of Menifee, as far as the fully supported positions are concerned. Remember, you're buying hours, but we equate those hours to full-time equivalent positions. That's why you see the decimals here. We have you with twenty-two point six deputies, one point two lieutenants, five sergeants, four point six investigators for a total of thirty-three point four two positions on the sworn side. The rate drives a certain number of classified positions and that calculates out to roughly two point eight office assistants, two point two CSO twos and SSO twos, one, one accounting position, and then your dispatcher is as close to one point seven. So seven point seven classified positions for a roughly total of forty-one fully supported positions that you're getting through the rate.
Those are supported positions that I have to fill when they're broken or gone. But when he touches, I think on the next slide, he'll hit on the dedicated positions. This is what you add to that basic menu and that's why there's so much flexibility in our, in our contract services on it. That's the baseline model. It includes the entire system, including the civilian or classified support and dispatch and all the other pieces I talked about. And then when you add on the dedicated positions, this is over and above that model where you wanted specific additions or the city has wanted specific additions over time on staff.
Any questions on this slide?
The next slide probably answers it.
Okay.
Okay. The previous slide is what supports this particular model. Am I correct?
This slide, yes. This supports.
This is supported by the previous slide.
And these are your dedicated positions that you pay for over and above.
The two traffic, okay, that's two Quail Valley patrol deputies. They, they operate under a different budget, don't they, over in Quail Valley? Some of the deputies are, no, that's, I'm sorry, that's the fire department where Quail Valley operates differently, I think. They had their own subset budget. But you got four set deputies. What I keep hearing from the community is that there's only essentially three police cars out there at any one time. And I think that's true, but all of the other sworn officers and support groups you're talking about are readily available.
Yes.
However, you get complaints from people and say, well, just the other day, some, somebody said, my mother was crying out for somebody. She had heard somebody in the backyard. The conclusion was they were not in the house. So it wasn't a high enough priority that they were going to send a patrol car out there at that moment. And of course, then you get into not just differentiating what specific duties are of police officers, but what the community perceives as quality of life and what kind of response they would need for an acceptable quality of life. And, and, and I know it's not the fault of the county and it's not the fault of the city. But at the present time, I think it is a fact. In Menifee, we are understaffed for what is expected by the community in reference to response to what they would expect for what they would want for quality of life.
Yeah, I, I could speak to that. Probably that your, your police chief could even speak more authoritatively to that. But I can tell you generally, and I know Councilman Denver and I have had the discussion on staffing ratios and, and many of our newest communities, the four newest cities in this county and in the state have been hurt by that VLF takeaway. Otherwise, they would be actually staffed up at much higher levels. Across this county, and I track them all from all the different agencies as far as per thousand ratio. And you've got about eighty-two, eighty-three thousand, I think, at last, last count on your population. And I think if you look, you're somewhere on the order of fifty, fifty-five sworn positions for that. That's quite a bit lower. It's what you can afford at this point. Across the entire county, it runs just a little over one point oh per thousand. That's what the, if you just took Riverside County's, all its agencies, not only our, our contract partners, but the standalone police departments, that's what it's running. That number's driven down a little bit because of the ratios of the four newest cities and a couple of, one of them, Reno Valley, which is in major fiscal issues and has reduced its staffing levels down probably a little bit too low. Some communities are very high. Palm Springs run about two per thousand. Temecula, your, your neighbor to the south, pretty much holds the line at one per thousand. They'd like to do more, but it's, it's darn expensive. And then some of our other contract partners out in the desert, unnamed, but they'll run one point five, one point six. And others that are very, very fiscally constrained right now, been around a long time as a city, run a little bit lower in about point eight range. The normal recommended one is, as I said, if we were at about, in any of our communities, we're at one point oh, that's usually pretty much the norm as far as an average and appropriate one. But some communities have a different feel on it and they want to be at much higher levels. As I said, Palm Springs is almost two per thousand. The highest per capita ratio of officers in the entire, in our partners are right now is the city of Indian Wells. And that's because it's got an exceptionally small population base of five thousand people. So it doesn't take many officers, you know, thirteen, fourteen of them to drive up a very high number. So. But I think your point's on target. You are, but you're also living within your means. And, and that's the responsibility all of us have as government leaders is to live within our means on that. So it's a tough one. Not, not easy for any of the communities.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Will, would you do me a favor and explain the difference between this slide and the previous slide? This is dedicated positions, which I understand to be a twenty-eighty or full-time. That when those people are on vacation, they don't get backfilled. And the slide before is a seventeen eighty position that gets backfilled when they're off?
Yes.
So could you explain how these are added together? Because we've got thirty-three point four two plus classified of seven, seven, one, which is forty-one
Yes.
fully supported positions, but they're not dedicated positions. And then you've got dedicated positions on the other slide that don't total to thirty-two and a half officers that we believe we have.
It would be your thirty-two, if you're looking at your total complement, we break it out between the fully supported and your dedicated. You would add the positions on the next slide together to get to the fifty.
So do you have a third slide that does that for us?
No, it's, you just, you have what? Six, seven, nine, ten, fifteen?
So, so when we're talking in the community, we don't have thirty-four and a half police officers. We have, our, our staff is not thirty-four and a half. Our total staff, total police contingency is what?
Thirty-three. You have your thirty-three point four two plus the fifteen on the next slide. I'm sorry. Just sworn, yeah.
Go to the next slide.
This slide, yeah.
Two traffic deputies.
Ten.
One motor deputy, that's three.
It's ten.
Four set deputies, that's seven. Quail deputies, that's nine. Gang task force, that's ten, even though that's regional. You would not include the five CSOs.
Okay, so that's forty, what, what was the number?
That would be forty.
So is it forty-one point one three, what you have listed there on the bottom?
No, it's thirty-three point four two on the sworn.
On the sworn.
Plus ten.
Plus ten.
So forty-three point four two.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that.
I think we recalculate that to a higher percentage for our population. That's why I'm asking.
Oh, okay. Then, yeah.
That just, it takes it to five, point five for one thousand.
Thank you.
And are we correct at any given time, the, the number of black and whites that are here is three?
If I could jump in, I think you're talking the difference between patrol, which you see out on the street every day, running patrol and I'll defer to Captain Judge. But the differences between the, the four or three, or three that you see during the shift of patrol hours versus what can be brought in when there's a need.
I, I don't like to speak to deployment in an open meeting. However, the twenty-two point five six, those are your patrol deputies. Those are the ones working the street and they are divided up to cover three shifts. Watch one, two and three for a twenty-four hour period.
So, so to me, that's where, you know, that's good for you to hear. Now it helps me, I'm glad we're having this discussion because I've learned a couple of things. God, I don't really want, it, it seems to me that it's a little bit worse than I thought it was, if I can even say that. Because the ratio, okay, when you, when, when we use the ratio of sworn officers to our population, which is the forty-three point four two divided by eighty-three thousand people, that comes out to a ratio of point five to every one thousand residents. But we talk about deployment, boots on the ground deployment per shift. What, I don't know, what is it? Four, four, or four, three, three or something like that over the three shift, whatever it is. Or let, let's just be conservative and use the twenty-two and a half. The ratio to deputies on the street during a twenty-four hour period for our population is even worse than the point five to one thousand. Am I wrong or am I reading?
No, but nobody calculates it that way. The, the way that is calculated is the sworn with the supported staff.
But our, but our residents do when they don't see the force strength out there. That's kind of the point that I'm trying to make.
Sure. I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Remember, you're running a twenty-four, seven operation. And even the city of Riverside, which has about, at this point, about three hundred and fifty sworn for three hundred and twenty thousand population has the same issue. Because that sworn number includes everybody that's sworn from Chief Sergio Diaz, all, who doesn't operate a black and white, all the way down through the chain of command. Every community across the United States uses that same one. The, the classified or civilian employees are never part of any of those ratios for any of these agencies.
I understand.
It's agency head, in this case, actually you could add in, in theory, the captain. Because although he doesn't push a black and white, he is part of the sworn contingent for your, for your city and the sworn people then. But remember, you're running twenty-four, seven operations. And as I said, even when one of those deputies is broken, they're not just your deputies. I got to find another deputy to refill that slot. You're paying for service on the supported ones. You're paying for service hours. On the dedicated one, that's why I said, when they're on vacation, they're broken, they're sick, workers comp, that's on your nickel, just like any of your other employees are.
Yeah, I got you. So, so I'm, I'm sorry to be in the weeds on this because I'm just trying to understand it to, to the point where I can help make my own policy vote here down the road. We're paying for twenty-two point five sworn deputies. We have four, three and three on shift, if, whatever that number, let's be, let's say it's four, four and four and we're talking about twelve. We have twelve deputies, let's even throw in two supervising sergeants. And let's say there's sixteen for every twenty-four hour shift, but yet we're paying for twenty-seven. And, and, but there's only sixteen on the streets at any given time, unless there's a ma, a major conflagration where there needs to be a, a mutual response and you need to add force strength to it. I understand that. But you see what the point that I'm trying to make is, and I understand that's probably some overtime, it's probably vacation time built in. And I, I know it's a, you mentioned that that's a model that we've been using for thirty years and it's been tried and true over that time. But this is twenty thirteen. I think sometimes we need to maybe look at that model down the road to capture some more efficiency.
And what, how would you capture the efficiency, just out of curiosity? What would you see plussed up on it?
Well, I wouldn't know if I would, I, I don't know enough about it to see it's plussed up. But one of the things that, you know, I know, I know that overtime costs are built into these numbers. It would be nice for cities, contract cities cash flow purposes, if, if you could bill us for actual overtime costs incurred instead of automatically building it into our contract costs because the board of supervisors approved a collective bargaining agreement with the RSA to pay overtime automatically for every shift.
Yeah, I think Will can talk to the overtime a little bit because that's, that's, that's a little bit misleading. But let me, before he goes into that, let me frame it for you for context. Because again, you're buying a, a piece of our, our larger puzzle. If you, if you, if you want to give a positive context, take the unincorporated area that was reduced by, by budget decree from the board. Now it's being reversed to go back up. But when we went down to minimum staffing, you take our Hemet Station area, which is responsible for over eight hundred square miles, including Mount San Jacinto, on the clock at any given time, and I use this a lot with the public, there's only two or perhaps at the most, three deputies, depending on what shift is on, for eight hundred square miles available. So you remember, all these folks are being deployed across a twenty-four, seven operation. And that's why it takes five deputies to drive one position, basically twenty-four, seven. Takes five deputies to drive that, not including the detectives that have to follow up on, on that piece of work or the sergeants to oversee those deputies on that.
Will you, will you be speaking at all today about priorities? Will you, will you be speaking at all today about priorities, priority calls, what they mean? So that when we look at, say, three cars, with the understanding that there's a backup, and there are calls, and the response depends upon the priority. And then you'd have to look at it statistically to, to find out what the average is, uh, when you would get to a particular priority where there isn't going to be any response, at least not for a long, long time.
And, and I think, well, it's probably best if your police chief addressed that, because he's, it, it's similar across the county, but it's probably better that he end up talking to that. And he can do that either today or at a different time with you. But I think if you touch upon the overtime, how much, and also the issue of subpoenas and how that's, cause it, that part is picked up by the city.
Well, again, the, what you have, this slide in front of you are your full-time equivalent positions. You are buying hours. You're contracting for hours. So when the, the, I guess the way to really look at it is to see where you are as far as your service hours, your level of service, to make sure you're getting what you pay for. And included in that, uh, we may have a deputy on overtime, but you are, the rate is still the same for you. Uh, the, our over, contract overtime rate is less than the fully supported rate. If we have to bring somebody in to meet the obligation for the City of Menifee, um, it could be another deputy from somewhere else, from the unincorporated area. We're bringing that person in to so, because someone else is out, as the sheriff mentioned, a broken deputy. Uh, we have to replace those hours. So I hope that helps when you kind of frame it that way, when we're talking about hours.
And I think Captain Judge can probably speak to the issue of, of your deployment. Um, but typically what happens is swing shift is the heavier, cause you remember, you're buying, this is in a 24-hour period, those service hours. And it's up to you and, and, and the police department to end up figuring out whether you're going to have a whole bunch of people on graveyard, where there's very few calls, but dangerous calls. A whole bunch on swing, which is the most typical, and a whole bunch on daytime. So the actual deployment of, of whether it's going to be two, three, four, on any of those shifts, is pretty much done at the local level, based on what the needs are and what type of calls are coming in. You may in fact have four or five deputies on at a particular time, and only run in maybe two in the middle of the night. I, I'm speaking just generically.
Mr. Denver?
Since we're in the weeds, um, the, there's also issues of distance travel because of your union contracts. In other words, you don't really pay them, am I right, for their time on the job in Menifee. They have to start in Paris, and they have to get dressed, and they have, and so they're, I'm making this up, cause I don't know, but out of an eight-hour shift, let's say, they're probably in our area six hours. Whereas if, and I know the extra cost would be outrageous, but if there, if Menifee, if the police, Paris Police Station were here, we'd have another hour. And, and the second weeds is the, um, I, I don't, it is not what you think about, I, I think where they're going is we need more people on the street, rather than the gang task force and the lieutenants and the sergeants. Um, let me tell you the problem with, with not having a gang task force. The net result of all of this is we have to have a low crime rate. Trust me when I say, cause I've been monitoring it for five years, is when we don't have somebody doing the, the gangs, the kids, and we don't have somebody doing that, just done incidentally from, uh, things happening in other communities coming in, our crime rate goes up. I'd argue, I'd argue that if we increase the gang task force at the, at the, uh, depreciating the deputies on the street, our crime rate would go down. So there's more to this than so far we've talked about, although I admit I'm way down in the weeds.
No, and I, I, I think those are all good points, but it's all shades of gray as far as what you dial in, what you worry about regionally, which is what you're speaking about. Cause there's a powerful truth to that, 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 that not just worrying about what's inside the city limits, but being a part of those regional task forces. And that's been a very effective one across the entire Riverside County with eight different teams. So it's good to see that, that's a decision. Even as a separate standalone police department, uh, many of the agencies contribute people to those regional efforts for drugs and, and gangs and sexual predators on that. All good stuff, there's no correct answer. It's what every community wants to dial in as far as its prioritizations. Going back to your point, though, that we work 10-hour shifts typically, and it really does not burn up that much time, but that's a common issue. Um, some communities do it a little bit differently. If you remember a few years ago, Temecula was talking about having all the police officers, their contingent, be there on hand. They had enough size to do that. The department was supportive of that. There's a tipping point where you get, where that makes that cost-effective. Uh, the other example of where that works very well is in Moreno Valley, where they have their own facility, and everybody reports actually there. But that is a massive operation with several hundred people, and you're not, you're talking about enormous amount of service hours, way past that tipping point. So there's a variety of ways to skin it. It's very hard for some of the smaller communities, though, to have the structure. Those deputies, rather than reporting, or police officers, rather than reporting at a storefront, have to be within a chain of command. There's a lot of issues with constitutional issues, the issue with networking and getting information about what's going on. All our information systems, our evidence mechanisms, our equipment, our cars, the fuel, all that stuff is co-located. So those are all valid points as far as potentially lost time. But the reality is, even if you had your own police department, as an example, like many communities do, there would be those travel distances as they go back and forth to booking in a jail, being out the city on follow-ups. So it's not all black and white. It's, it's kind of shades of gray on that.
And I would just point out, I, I agree with, uh, Councilman Denver, that, uh, if you're talking about crime suppression, you, you, you just cannot emphasize enough, uh, the work with gangs. However, when you talk about, um, black and whites in the community, it's just not a matter of cost or even crime suppression. One of the demands of your community is visibility, and that has to be put into the equation.
How many more slides do we have, sir? Just one more? Okay, cause I just want to make sure that everybody gets their questions answered, but I also don't want to unnecessarily delay you, gentlemen. Cause you're taking time out of your busy schedule.
We're here for you.
I don't, you know, but these are important questions for us to ask and for us to understand.
Well, they're charging us, aren't they?
It's part of our billing.
No.
I was gonna say, I'm, I'm not in the rate. Oh, and by the way, neither is the cap, captain is not in the rate either.
Uh, Councilmember Furman?
I know there's, uh, there's grants and stuff for overtime, and, uh, actually, who's in, who's in charge of, uh, assigning overtime to the different officers? And, and basically, how much overtime, uh, annually, maybe, does each officer get? And, uh, yeah, that's my question.
It would depend on the circumstances behind it. Now, I think your question was twofold. One, I believe you were talking about a grant. It could be OTS, it could be some kind of checkpoint.
Right.
That is approved, um, money from, from the state, and we work the checkpoints here. Um, that doesn't come out of your pocket.
Okay.
As far as overtime, I can't tell you every specific deputy gets allotted this much overtime. That's not how it works. It's by need. I'm sorry, did I answer both the questions?
So, uh, so, uh, who assigns overtime?
It could be the sergeant.
The sergeants.
Yeah, somebody could call in sick, and we might drop below minimum staffing, and the sergeant, uh, is immediately to fill that spot. Or a late call. It, it could be 100 things.
Okay.
So, uh, the sergeant ha, has the ability to do that.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So, I, I want to correlate this to another public agency, and I, I want you, I want to caveat my, my statement between law enforcement, which is completely different than a school district, okay? But the Menifee School District, last year, paid $665,000 in overtime costs, in, in, uh, teacher subpay and overtime. Because when a teacher's out, they have to pay the teacher still, and then they have to pay the sub to come in behind them. And so when you're talking about a budget of, you know, $34 million of the general fund, that's a cost that you want to be able to control. And, uh, one of my concerns going forward in time is, is that under the current model of how we're contracting and how we're billed is, we don't have a lot of say about how that, how we're charged overtime. And so when it comes to controlling costs, uh, and I, I spoke about earlier about cash flows and things of that nature, it's something that I would like us to maybe explore down the road at some point. Whether the rest of my colleagues agree with that or not, you know, if, if, if the, if the county executive office is willing to explore and use Menifee as a guinea pig for that, that'd be great.
Again, it goes back to, if there's a critical need, then we'll, we'll fill it. However, I, I wish to assure you, every two weeks, my lieutenants and I sit down, and we go through the budget, and we make sure of targets, that you're not shooting up over 100%, and that you're not, um, dropping below 80, because obviously we want to fulfill the hours that you've contracted for. So we try to keep it very close, and we're always watching the overtime. Uh, that is part of our budget. But again, we need to have the ability, um, when we need people, to apply the overtime.
Sure.
Once it drops below minimum staffing, for whatever reason, and I think we only mentioned five or six of them, there could be dozens.
Do, do we get to know that number, annually, how much overtime was paid, just like they do on the school board?
Well, it's easy to get for you, but one of the things I'll caution you in, cause I deal with millions of dollars overtime in my entire budget. Uh, and, and one of the things that, that are responsible, some types, like for all juvenile reports, by law, we have to end up doing that because we have to turn the report in. We can't hold that over to the next shift. And so before the officer leaves a juvenile intake, that report's got to be completed, and it, regardless of how long that person's been on shift. You get a late call, we're not going to end up damaging your citizens by, on a rape case, by, whoops, we gotta go and have a new investigator come in here, or a new, new officer. You can't do business that way. Or you get a late crash, that ends up having a drunk driver arrest, and that officer's got a, doesn't have somebody else to end up booking that person in, or has more follow-up. There are a host of things that end up coming back on that. The big one, I'll tell you, are subpoenas during off-time going into court. And that's a big chunk of my overtime, and probably a big chunk of every community. Even for your own police department, that is an overtime issue with every agency. And those folks, and that's one of the hard things about doing this job, they give up vacations, they give up typically anniversaries, graduations, days off where they make personal commitments. But when they get in order to go to court, we discipline them, but they don't show up, cause those cases are tossed at great cost to the community and to our, our credibility. So when they sit there, and after they've been working all night, and they get a court case sitting in the day, that is overtime that any of us, including you, are going to end up incurring on it, regardless of whether it's a contract with us or your own police department. They have to appear in court. That's part of their job description. And believe me, there is a lot of the overtime that is directly court-driven, subpoenas, endless subpoenas on things that don't even go to trial. So I would enjoy your help as far as getting the DA's office not to subpoena everybody that's at a scene, cause typically that's what happens, and we have a lot of officers standing around in court. But I'll tell you, the judges get really persnickety when those officers fail to appear in court.
And, did they, did they answer your question? Yeah, and I, I just, I ask it from the standpoint of a newspaper article that I read about, you know, the, the Board of Supervisors and the union, uh, achieving a collective bargaining agreement, was well-publicized, that included built-in overtime. I, I understand operational overtime costs. I, I, you know, did the military thing for 25. I understand of, of getting people where you need to have them for whatever you need to do for them. And for the situation, but I just, for, for, for a collective bargaining agreement to have, and that's a philosophical point, but to have a collective bargaining agreement that mandates overtime, I, I, I have a problem with that as a fiduciary of, of the municipal government of, called Menifee. That's all.
Yes.
You hear that loud and clear?
Okay.
Just to wrap it up, uh, with contract law enforcement, you get a turnkey operation with no startup cost. There's enhanced city identity with your patches and your cars, et cetera. Indemnification from civil liability, as we touched on. Um, officers' actions are held by the county, not the city. Flexibility and responsiveness, your service levels can be adjusted up or down as needed, and also you can add additional dedicated positions. It's tailored to your city. Specialty bureaus included in baseline services. You get recruitment, training, retention, and human resource services. And that is the end of the presentation. Uh, any questions?
Mr. Denver?
I'm gonna do this one more time. There's got to be an answer, but I'm so dumb that I still don't quite understand it. I, I apologize in advance. Let's assume that I'm, we're the City of Menifee, and they cut another $4 million, million from us, and we go down to one officer per hour, period. One officer per hour. I know that our, uh, response time is going to be a bunch less. I know that. Goes from four minutes on the number one to seven, eight, nine, 10 minutes on number one. But if we had to do that, if we cho, let's do it this way, if I chose to do that, I know that you are not going to allow an officer to be damaged, to be hurt. You have to have a, a second person around. And that could be paid for, if I so chose, by another city, or it could be paid for by the county. And that, well, and it was just whoever's closest, because you're not going to have one of your people die over some issue of a cheap city, even damaged cheap city, doing that. So why wouldn't we all drop our, our numbers of, of officers down and let the county, let the other cities pick them up? Why, why is it that, um, one city that has some money, you keep, you say over and over and over and over again, is not subsidizing the cities that absolutely can't do it otherwise? And you keep saying, no, no, it's, you're, we're not subsidizing one another. How is that possible?
I still don't quite grasp what you're after. I'll tell you this, that some, some cities will only, and will, will oblige by that, that will contract for one deputy 24 hours a day. There are two cities in this county, that, that's their contract right now. That, those cities are very quiet, and we can do that safely, because there's a county person usually not too far away. Now, too far away is one of those relative terms, depends on whether you're the one that's in trouble or not, but the, the reality, we can do that. With other cities, we would never end up going that low, because of the issues with how, with the call volume and the danger to the officer. So going back to your question, each city would be looked at on a case-by-case basis, uh, whether we'd ever go below two officers, 24/7 in that. So I, I don't quite understand the other issue. The other cities, on a mutual aid thing, are going to come for the call of emergency whenever they can get there. Uh, I, I guess that's indirectly a form of subsidy, but those emergencies are few and far between. And most communities, after a while, when, when something has been called wolf, will figure it out pretty quickly, and their agencies will no longer respond if they're just supplementing somebody else's service levels. So that comes back to the fundamental core of what you're after. If you're saying, we're just gonna let our, our officer, whoever it may be, uh, flounder out there, and that the cavalry will come and rescue them, just for the case of the emergency, that probably is not going to wash with anybody.
Did I hear you say that if we were foolish enough to do that, you might just, um, let that officer be by himself?
No, I think, I, what I told you clearly was, we might not let you allow it to go that low.
How? If a city in our area, I can think of the fire department as a little bit more, uh, apropos, but let's just talk about, say, if, if a city really wanted to drop our, had to, as we saw it, drop our level down, what would you do?
Well, let me give you, for instance, this for real, that I deal with from time to time. A city may decide, and that's happened under my watch and previous sheriffs, that they can't afford 24/7, one officer on duty. We're not going to contract with them.
Period.
Period.
I, I.
24 hours, 24/7, 24 hours of service, one person on there 24/7, that is the minimum, the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, and only in some communities where it is safe to do that. Is that loud and clear? Thank you.
Mr. August, you had a question?
Yeah, real short, um, for, you can take this share. What, um, listen, being new at this, I'm surprised at the number of calls I get. It's not your fault. I talked to, with, about, with the captain the other day. Got people calling 911 that shouldn't be calling 911. We've got people that absolutely know nothing about our police services in this city. Why? And maybe you can tell us why we can't get our $4 million back to put an adequate number of police officers here. What do we have to do? Go to Sacramento and take it over or something?
I think we've been doing that. We haven't taken it over, but a bunch of us have been back and forth to Sacramento, so.
How come? I, I just want to know. Can you suggest anything to us?
I think this, your community, and I know your full-time staff have been working hand and glove with the other three cities. Those of us that, that are, are interested from the safety standpoint have been helping you. You've got some of the legislature that's actually been carrying it. Um, but it's difficult to end up getting the, the majority up there, including the governor at one point, who vetoed the original thing that passed, uh, to end up, I don't know whether.
Is, is the threat.
Supportive of the damage they've caused with their takeaway. And it's only included the damage to the four cities that were newly incorporated and across this entire state, all in the western end of Riverside County, all of which are our contract partners.
Is the threat of incorporation going to have any bearing on what's going on in Sacramento?
Uh, so far, that's kind of been a moot point, uh, that, that. So far, that's kind of been a moot point. It doesn't seem like they're too concerned about incorporation or disincorporation. In fact, if you watch right now, the specter of Yerupa Valley, a great community, it took forever to go through this, and just days before they actually became a city, had that money stolen from them, substantially more than four million dollars. But the reality is, it seems like there's undaf ears in Sacramento, particularly out of the governor's office, basically saying they don't care. And now the paper is carrying those threats, because of the timeline to begin disincorporation, and it's just a sad state of affairs. But some of our alleged reps, you know, Senator Roth out of Riverside has tried very hard, and even had a bipartisan bill that went all the way to the governor and got vetoed, if you remember, a year ago. So I'm not offended, because I think it's been terribly wrong, and it's harmed your community, but it's harmed those other three communities. Two of the four communities are so badly harmed, I'm not sure they're going to be able to stand on their own. And that's a sad thing.
I always, I always found that when, when you want to get a call from your creditors, if you miss a couple of payments every once in a while, you might get their attention. You know, and I'm, I'm sure our council is not quite that extreme, but, you know, if you guys want to deal with us, you want to get paid, then you better give us the services and money we're entitled to. And that's kind of how I feel.
It's not just in that arena. I mean, it's a different time, a different topic, but I could go on at length about AB 109, the impact on our jails, which is another piece of the safety puzzle across Riverside County. But I'll do that on a different occasion.
Are there any additional questions for our guests? Mr. Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
A couple of comments. Before I make them, Sheriff, my apologies for this. Were you an officer prior to nineteen seventy-nine?
Guilty. I was a police officer in nineteen seventy-five, actually on a city police department. And I came to the sheriff's office in seventy-nine, so yes.
Riverside? You were with the city of Riverside?
No. I was with the city of Coachella, a small police department out in the eastern end of the Coachella Valley, which is now one of our contract partners, by the way. But it stayed as a separate police department for many years.
Oh, thank you for that. I think one of the lessons that we on the council learn when we're listening to people, essential services come before us, fire, police, they demand full-cost recovery. The logic is, if they don't, their service is not sustainable. So either you're going to have to pay the extra fee, or you're going to lose the service. Hopefully, our council will remember that the next time people come up here and complain to us about fees, and we will remember that we need full cost and recovery, or we need to cut the fees. I do recall when I first started in this city, which was a very big experience for me to begin with a new city. And the city of Marietta, some of the firemen over there said, hey, we can, we can give you a fire department a lot cheaper. And we ended up giving it to Hernandez, because he was better-looking. But having been in a different city, where we had our own police department, our own fire department, I guess one could say philosophically, that works better. But often you see cities that are small, and they'll generate, or try to generate, their own police department, let's say. And some people have said that's really based more on ego than it is on good police work, or certainly on, on budgets. It is, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, as part of our fiduciary obligation, not only to remind our citizens of how well the sheriff's department does, and you do a great job, and we really appreciate what you do, and particularly what those officers do twenty-four, seven. But it is our obligation to continually look and, and I, I don't think this is going to frighten you at all, Sheriff, but it is our obligation to go out there and say, can we joint powers with somebody else? Does it make sense? And not just in dollars, but in service and in perception, et cetera. And we're always going to get people approaching us about fire, about police, and we need to continue to evaluate that and look at it, if we're going to meet our fiduciary obligation to our taxpayer. Right now, I'm, I'm extremely happy with the sheriff's department. I only speak as one member on the council. But if the mayor or other members of the council say to me, hey, look, there's this other potential for a joint powers, can we look at it? Would you be willing to look at it? Of course. I think we should all look at it.
I think all of us would not disagree with that whatsoever. But I'd also underscore to you what I said at the outset, that our contract operation operates as a gigantic JPA, seventeen cities plus the unincorporated area. So there are a really wide set of shoulders. Any subset of that, talking in terms of two or three cities, the mathematics, the arithmetic simply doesn't hold. It's too small. And the costs aren't dispersed on a wide enough basis. If you look at the sheriff's office, even on patrol cars, and I have a lot, fifteen-hundred cars altogether in my fleet, eight hundred of them dedicated patrol. If you took all the police departments in this county, all eleven, city, all great police departments, some of them quite small, twenty-one, twenty-two sworn, stack them end on end, throw in all the, the three campus police departments and all the high patrol stations, just the Riverside County Sheriff's patrol operations dwarfs all those put together. We are ten times the size of Riverside Police Department. So any model that you're talking about in terms of Skechers or some other thing, you're going to have to have a pretty wide model to get the most cost-effective. So any subset of two or three cities is going to be a difficult one, just on the liability issues alone.
Well, that certainly makes sense to me, based on my own experience. But I do recall in a city that I previously represented, that some smaller cities would compare between our city as a contractor and LA County. Sometimes we would provide service, sometimes LA County would provide service. Bear in mind, we were a very large city. But when you talk about cost, like any vendor, you can, as you pointed out, bring it directly down to your minimum cost. But some other entity, their minimum cost might be more, and it might be less for the same service. And as you know, that would be true of any vendor.
Absolutely. And I'll tell you right now, from firsthand, because we're the six-thousand-pound gorilla, so to speak, I already have a number of different communities, right now actively banging on our door, that are having difficulty, because public safety is devouring larger and larger portions of their, their budget. And you'll, and what we'd encourage you to do is to end up doing studies, like all our other communities have been for the last two or three decades, from time and again. And that's part of your fiduciary responsibility. But every study that this department has been involved in, we're a community all the way out through the, the, the Coachella Valley, up to this end, city after city, those studies have all come back one hundred percent, that the sheriff's office was the most cost-effective. So yes, I agree on the fiduciary responsibility. We enjoy a great relationship with your community, a wonderful community, and all our partners. That is part of your responsibility. But I think you're going to have to look far and, far and wide to end up finding something that's as cost-effective as us. And it gives you, the other issue is that responsive service. So that's what we pride ourselves on. We've got a lot of very innovative. I've spoken to the other councils across the county, that even the educational levels, since I've taken office, have soared inside this department. The people that run the sheriff's office, at this point, the executives and the senior command folks, right now all have bachelor's degrees. The execs, probably two-thirds of them have master's degrees at this point, are FBI Academy graduates. You've got some great and very skilled, innovative people at all different ranks. Today, with three hundred and fifty sergeants, that's bigger than many agencies, that's as big as Riverside City. That's how many sergeants I have in the sheriff's office. Half of those folks already have bachelor's degrees, and some of them are working for higher advancement. And we don't require that for the rank of sergeant, or for lieutenant. But someday, long after I'm gone, that will be a requirement. Law enforcement has become much more of empowering at the lower levels. Education, being bilingual, being diverse, like representing our communities, has all become very, very critical. And to that, on November twenty-first, at Grove Community Church, we'll have our next graduation. There's forty more, forty-one more deputies, I think, that'll graduate that night. And you will see very vividly how massive the sheriff's office is, because we train all the police departments in our academy. In fact, the smaller counties like Imperial, Mono, and Inyo County, they're too small a sheriff's office to have their own training academy. They train here with Riverside County Sheriff's Department. The police departments in this county, and some of them from outside, actually are trained by our staff at the Riverside County Sheriff's Department. All of you are more than welcome to come to that. It starts at six in the evening at the Grove Community Church in Riverside. And it'll be well worth your while to see those young men and women that are coming into the workforce on that, some of which will be serving in your community someday. And we'd love to have you. So you get a good feel of the quality of folks that we've got in our department.
Thank you very much for that invitation. I have a couple more questions, if you don't mind. The, when we talk about some of these other cities who have their own police departments, how does mutual aid work with them? How do, how do the court services work? How do transportation and those types of services work for, say, Marietta? Sure, they don't have their own courthouse, per se. They don't have their own, I know they have a detention facility down at their city hall, but at what point does the sheriff's department get involved with their operations from a mutual aid standpoint? And then do you charge them for those services separately?
No, we don't on the mutual aid, because that's all under that aegis of being emergency.
Okay.
So they may have a huge fight breakout, or, like I said, a huge, huge incident that's an emergency incident. It only draws people during the course of the emergency. Because once the incident is stabilized, we go. Typically, what they'll utilize, like most of the other police departments, would be our bomb team, if it's available. They have a bomb incident, because they don't have their own. Some of the departments, not Marietta, will do a three-way with other agencies on forming a cooperative SWAT team. More and more of the police departments have walked away from that, because unless you're, it's like anything in the military, as you remember, you can be book-learned, but if you're not battle-hardened on that, you don't have the expertise. And our folks do it full-time. And we have an actual full-time SWAT team that's capable of actually deploying to two simultaneous incidents in the county, which sometimes, believe it or not, we actually get. So for many of the agencies, not Marietta-specific, but many of them, they'll rely upon our SWAT team. Typically, our internal affairs folks can be on call to help with some type of investigations. It doesn't happen as often anymore. Our homicide folks, on some types of cases that the department directs, will help them on some cases. Typically, there's a internal affairs one, and there's also a criminal investigation. And some agencies have, have asked us for objectivity, because of our sheer size and mass, to do something that's politically sensitive, or involved diversity issues that are going to come back and blow up in the community. But those are typically what we do on that end. The courts issue doesn't really impact any of our contract city operations, because typically our, our folks move people in and out of the jails, into the courts, and back and forth. Those officers from Marietta would go on their own to testify in their cases, even if they're sitting all day in court, on the, on the city dime, outside their city, in court. They would end up doing that. It could be that court, it could be in Riverside, it could be in the federal courts in Riverside. Wherever that is, just like your officers, they end up having to go and respond to those subpoenas. That part doesn't impact us that much. We don't have that much to do. Their detention facility is not a jail. There is very, very few police departments that actually have jails. That's the legal responsibility of the county jail system. And I absorb the liability on that. So they're normally anxious to get that off their, off their liability issues, because those hospital bills and the other things are, can be darn expensive.
Do you absorb that cost?
Oh, I have to, by law.
For those other cities that have their own?
As soon as they're booked into the county jail, I own them. And that's why the medical issues in a county jail are so utterly critical, because most of the inmates, usually at least half of them in a county jail system, very different from state prisons, are awaiting trial. They haven't even found guilty, even though you hear on the blogs, they're all crooks, they deserve bread and water. The reality is, there's somebody's grandma that's arrested for drunk driving, could be a vandal, could be up to a homicide suspect. Everybody flows through those jails to the tune of almost the size of, roughly three-fourths of your population. Nearly sixty thousand adults flow through the front end of our county jail system, run by the sheriff, every year. So that's a massive operation, about to get a heck of a lot bigger, with a lot of positions we're hiring for. But I, I own the liability on that lock, stock, and barrel, and the county can't walk away from that.
So I guess what I'm asking is, I appreciate that response, and I understand it. So when we talk about full-cost recovery under the government code, those cities that have their own PD, they're, you're eating the cost of taking care of that service for them, the jails, the jail cost.
Yes.
And they're, and so, so they're not a contract city with you. Why don't you charge them back for that cost?
Well, the only thing we do charge that's allowed under the law is the booking fee. The same booking fee for, for booking somebody into jail. That doesn't cover the whole cost, obviously, of the jail. But they pay those same costs. The only ones that are exempted are the state on that, and that's just a small smidgen. But, but I, you know, that's an issue of how the law's been written for a long time, the county jails. And that's why typically, police chiefs will run away with their hair on fire from having anything to do with a jail. Because all you're doing is getting sued, and it's enormously expensive. And it's certainly not a sexy thing to have to operate.
How about the prosecution and the use of the courthouse, and all that stuff?
Well, as all of you should know, the, other than a couple of courts that are historic here, the courts and the funding for courts comes out of the state trial funding. That's not done here, even at, at the county level. It used to be at one point, and maybe probably perhaps was a better thing, because we could allocate the number of judges we need, so on. But the costs of the court are not absorbed in the county at all.
Sheriff, I'm, I'm sure you're familiar. I've seen a couple of smaller cities that insisted on beginning their own police departments in LA County. And a lot of times, the reaction from the community, the pressure on the elected officials really is emphasizing, of course, service over budget. And a lot of people assume, well, what we'll do is we'll hire officers, and we want our officers to live in our town. Aside from some constitutional questions, as I understand it, there are a lot of police officers, for some very legitimate reasons, even including people on fire, on arson, and such things, who do not wish to live in the place where they are hired.
That's accurate. Although, to be honest with you, most, most folks that go into the law enforcement community, I can't speak for the fire, but I assume it's somewhat the same. But in the law enforcement community, they do gravitate to their work sites. I mean, just the economy, it drives a lot of that. And you're right, there are issues now legally where you can't require that. But most, most communities want somebody to be within punching distance of being able to respond, particularly the higher-level ones, and be vested also in the community as well. And much of our issues on, you know, ultimately pensions, but much of our issues on even salary in California, if you stop and think about it, much of that was driven, and your old site there in Long Beach, and but the LA area, led the increases in costs on housing and stuff. In fact, Riverside County benefited by having affordable housing and land and so on, and we drew a lot of those folks out. But the salaries of, of public safety people, even though it's way higher than other states, the cost of living here, and that very issue of trying to get people to live close to their communities where they're going to go to work as police officers, that's what's driven a lot of the issues, including on pensions, as far as going up so much. It's related to that housing bubble that we all go in, and probably soon will end up starting another housing bubble not too far off. I pray not. But the reality, that's how the cycle operates. But those costs end up costing us an awful lot. But the public mirrors exactly what you're saying. They want officers to be local, they want them to be vested. And even if they can't live directly inside that jurisdiction, they want them relatively close by. And, you know, you can go on and on with the patrol cars that we used to, very cost-effectively used to give to people, because, and several agencies experimented with that. It's maybe counterintuitive. But folks, rather than something that's moved around and nobody owns, take better care of things that they're responsible for and sign on the name, and they clean it at their own expense, and those cars seem to last forever. And we have had a few PDs have done that, even though they got a lot of extra benefit by having those extra black and white miles, visibility, like we were talking about, out there and amongst, even if they're going back and forth to their home.
Mr. Denver?
There's a question. There's a unique thing that's happened. I've never seen it before. And that's the two officers in Quail Valley. The Quail Valley people, to my knowledge, do not complain about lack of police, because they know personally the police officers. They come to meetings, they meet them, they're always there, there's the same two. Actually, they think they're there all the time, they're really not. It's less than one.
It's their officers.
It's their officers, and they're friends. And it gets past the whole issue of having to live there. That's Doug, I forget names now, but that's so-and-so, that's so-and-so. I, is there any possibility that there'd be a logic to us doing more of that, where the officers, at least for a period of time, are assigned to areas?
Yeah. In fact, I'm very supportive of that. I'm a little bit, we had that at one point, outside cities, in the unincorporated area, one of our staffing ratio. And I think the board found out very hard and very quickly, that when they reduced it down to minimum staffing, it looked good on the books. But I tell you, within six months of striking that devil's bargain, they came back to me and said, you need to fix that. Well, it's a long time to create deputy sheriffs and police officers. But at one point, in the unincorporated area, we precisely did that. Inside of each of our cities, and every one of them contracts to a different level based on their ability to pay, that in fact does already exist in many parts of the department, where the staffing levels are, are... where the staffing levels are high enough to do that. But many cities, including yours, are struggling right now with really constrained fiscal resources, and that becomes the devil in the detail, as far as getting your head above water, so to speak. But that is ultimately what you just touched upon, the goal of every single one of our agencies, not just mine, but every one of those wants officers that know the community, and the community knowing those officers. Now, one more piece to that, because it hasn't been brought up here, but typically it does, and that's the stability of staff, because our department tries very hard, as big as it is, to stabilize our staff, but bearing in mind, just like the military, Mayor, that I have a responsibility as a senior leader to grow leaders that are gonna replace me and the others in the department. And I ticked off all those areas of responsibility that I have, and I ticked off the importance of education, but my responsibility is not allow any community to have somebody stay so long that they became burnouts, and that happens in law enforcement, I know, hard to believe, but they become very unproductive, and they become very complacent. And so, and I have a responsibility for young ones coming in that have lots of energy, to give them an opportunity to learn, in your great community and in other communities. And so we try to balance that very delicately, so that that stability of the officers knowing the community and vice versa occurs, but not so long, when you end up having people not rewarded with promotions, or staying so long they become unproductive, and just occupy in a seat to draw money. And that's a delicate one, I know, but it touches upon that very issue. The advantage that I had when I came to the sheriff's office over a small police department was, when I was on a small police department, after a while, you're always wondering what's on the other side of the fence. And so you're anxious to go and mutual aid things, because you can go out into another area and see what that's like. And the great gift that the sheriff's department has, and really, it's a great gift to every community that we serve, including our contract partners, is we have the ability to keep people motivated and excited, and also develop them as senior leaders, to get a very broad perspective. If you take a small 25 officer department, you know, everybody comes up through the entry-level chairs of being in a patrol car, up through the ranks and so on, it's a small base to draw from. When I'm drawing to promote captains, I'm drawing from a base of nearly 100 lieutenants in the department. And I'm drawing from captains to be chief deputies, there's a couple dozen captains, and for those 12 executive positions, I can draw quite literally some of the best talent in the department. And it goes all the way down through the ranks like that. I draw from a very wide set of resources on that. And that, somebody that serves in your community as a deputy sheriff, police officer, maybe a detective, gets promoted, goes to another part of the department to learn a larger operation, maybe work with another city council or another community to learn other ways of doing things, because all of them are kind of unique, and then comes back sometimes as a sergeant, or lieutenant, or a captain. And so usually what you end up seeing, if you've been with us long enough, you see talented people move, grow, and end up coming back, giving back to the community that they actually started in. So that's probably more than you wanted to hear, but thanks for hitting that button.
Thank you for that, thank you.
I just have one more question, and it may be a question more pertinent for staff, but I noticed that I have, we have the County Board of Supervisors staff report in front of us from July 15th of 2009, and it's a three-year contract that expires on June 30th of 2012. I guess my, are we operating on a non-contract, or is there an automatic renewal clause in here somewhere?
With ours, there's an automatic renewal. The old one just kind of rolls over, so.
And is there an opportunity to work with your team and our staff on the particulars of the, before this rolls over?
Yeah, absolutely. I would be interested. I don't know what the issues would be, or what they might be, but that's absolutely certain, we'd be happy to work with you. Typically, and I'll go back to why those things are multi-year, even though, as you noticed, there's usually, there is a 12-month notification on going up or down. And you gotta remember, when you increase staffing, it's just like you have your own police department. I have to go out and recruit. I don't have those deputies sitting on the shelf ready to wind up. So I have to end up as part of my recruiting, and right now, I'm on a massive effort anyway, so it makes it pretty easy. But it takes a while, and two or three months to do a background investigation at high speed for a peace officer, six months in a basic academy, four months in a field training program, and that's just for an entry-level police officer in this state. So it takes you about five years to create a termed key police officer. But here's the kicker, and all of us, all the police chiefs, the both sheriffs for both San Bernardino and Riverside County talk about this all the time, it's really hard to get, a lot of people want those jobs, very hard to get qualified candidates. We hire, so you can imagine what it is, a struggle with a small city trying to keep its police department replenished. But the last time I went after 100 deputies, and I use this a lot out in the community, when I expanded Larry Smith, and even though the county was bleeding red ink, I got authority to add jail capacity by hiring the staff for the new beds that they spent $80 million on. I went after 100 sworn deputies, these are the ones with the guns and stripes and have peace officer powers. I started with 31,000 applications, and I didn't hire, and that was in tough economic times where people want a lot of jobs, I didn't hire 100, I hired 94. And that summer of 2011, when I was talking before the board, I still had on the books 74. The others that had been fired, let go for not meeting standard, had quit, or figured out that this was not their line of work. It is very, very tough to get qualified people. A lot of people want those jobs, but most people don't qualify. A civilian in the sheriff's office, even for a low-paid clerical position, the lowest-paid jobs that I have, every single individual in the sheriff's office, like the DA's office, is backgrounded and polygraphed, unlike the rest of the county government. Every single one of them are. In fact, the county hires people on its books that we have specifically rejected for hire. So they're highly vetted. The failure rate for polygraphs alone, not cop, talking about cops, I'm talking about civilians for the lowest-paid positions, is 50% for dishonesty. 50%. And I'm sure that's not a surprise for those who have businesses out there, we hire from our society, but it tells you the challenges that any of us in the law enforcement community have on getting qualified people.
Is that because of drug?
Drugs? That's part of it. But part of it is the society that we all are part of right now does not devalue sometimes integrity and credibility, and that is absolutely critical in law enforcement. And so we police ourselves up very thoroughly, and we try to screen at the front end, and we still get people that come into our midst that don't belong there, and end up removing them. We do a pretty good job, but the reality is, the society is, you know, this is a very individualistic society, you know? The end justifies the means in a lot of ways, and that's a slippery slope.
There's moral issues, educational issues, and medical issues, as you go through the whole weeding out process. So, Mr. Johnson, you've had your light on for a couple minutes.
Thank you, sir. Just wanted to update you on the contract. It did expire on the June 30th, 2012, but if we don't, I'm just reading it real quick here. Prior to 12 months preceding the expiration date, we would need to cancel the contract, or it renews for another three years automatically. So we're in an automatic three-year renewal of the initial contract. If we were gonna do additional services, or change dramatically what the components of the contract would be, we would develop a new contract.
And that's a 12-month notification?
Correct.
So that the department can ramp up if we were to add, as an example, one rudimentary example?
I believe they would take our money and ramp up ahead of time, but they'd wanna give a little bit of leeway, a little lead time.
I don't think we'd take your money ahead of time, but we actually, we can't bill you until we actually have the product that we're doing it. But the reality is, we would end up needing to start that food chain to end up generating the extra staff, if you're gonna plus up on that. And that, that'll be wired into the rest of our large-scale hirings, because we're hiring for jails and lifting the unincorporated area up. One of the things that, just as a frame of reference, since you touched upon that, that they're multi-year contracts, typically three and five years, is because, if you remember at the outset, when I talked about my missions, my mission under the law is not to do contract policing. That's something that has grown and been a very powerful tool. When I first came to the sheriff's office in 1979 from a small city police department, as I said, I got put in our contract communities out in the desert. And probably, at that time, the patrol force and the Riverside County Sheriff's Department was at about 75% county, unincorporated area, and only 25% in cities. Today, the sheriff's department has reversed that. 75% of our patrol force is in our contract communities that do modern policing. In motorcycle officers alone, if you stacked them all up across all our different communities that we serve, 50. That's bigger than most of the police departments in this county, just in motorcycle officers. So we have it pretty much at a high state of art. Every community does things differently, they staff in accordance with their ability to end up funding that. But all the things that you talked about, as far as closest to the community and all those things, those are the goals for every one of our communities, and certainly the goals of the sheriff's office. But we bring those people over and above my basic missions under the law. We bring those people over and above my basic manning levels, and that's why there needs to be some form of stability. When you saw in the papers that Moreno Valley, due to fiscal issues, had to downsize those officers, every one of those communities that gained those officers, gained experienced officers without paying a darn dime for it. And the city of Moreno Valley subsidized that. That was not something that I encouraged them to do, they had to do what they had to do on their fiscal issues on it. But our ability to downsize, if that had been its own police department, those officers would have been laid off. But because we're growing, and we have other communities, contract partners that are expanding, we were able to just redeploy those folks. But that's the issue that I have, when I expand or contract, I have to provide a career for these people. At least, that's the moral imperative, that they're gonna end up having a job after a certain amount of time. So that's why we look for a long-term commitment on that, even though there's a 12-month notification.
Well, thank you very, very much, Sheriff, and your team for coming here tonight and presenting this. I know it's a long two hours, but it's been a wealth of information, and you answered some tough questions from us, and they were very eye-opening, and there may be some questions that still remain, but, you know, we'll get through them together. I also want, I want to thank staff on behalf of the council. I know you were all here late till 11:15 last night with the planning commission, so I appreciate you staying here for tonight as well. And, you know, we're all very appreciative of every single man and woman who is on patrol in Menifee, and that's up and down the chain of command. We know the valuable job that they do, it's a tough job to do, it's dangerous, they put themselves in harm's way every single day. And so none of our questions here tonight were in any way designed to detract from the great job that they do to protect and serve us here in Menifee. And we just want you to know, Sheriff, that we appreciate everything that you're doing up and down the chain of command, and we thank you very much.
Very, very appreciated, and thank you very much for the comments, and I'll underscore to you, because I drop in, and some of our operations as I get time, but every one of our employees loves working in your community. They view it as they're a part of that community, and that's exactly what the department expects of every one of our employees on that. But I can tell you, without even prompting on that, we very much treasure the relationship with your community, and many of them live in your community as well, and we appreciate that.
Thank you, sir, very much. Mr. Johnson, do we have anything else for tonight?
No, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's all.
I would just, Mr. Johnson, I was fascinated by the polygraph thing. I personally think for our employment, trying to keep our employment costs down, we should do a polygraph. Just ask them three questions. Have they ever taken drugs? Have they ever cheated on their spouse? And have they ever cheated on taxes? And then hire anybody that doesn't pass.
Do that for the city council, too, that would be interesting.